Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five City Council. Kathleen, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Dear Lord, please bless us once again in our deliberations. Please continue to bless our city and all those who work for the city's benefit as staff and volunteers, and please bless the citizens, the people who live here in Nacogdoches and work and play. Please bless all of our families wherever they are. Bless our university faculty, staff, students as we start a new semester. And please bless our state as they go into special session and our nation. And as always, thank you for everything. We do know that everything we have is given from you through your generosity to us, and we are very grateful. We pray all these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
If you'll stand for the pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
First one is Ms. Celeste Ferris. If you'll just state your name and address, please.
Celeste Ferris, fifty-three, seventeen Northway Drive, number one oh eight. And if I'm struck, y'all was being particularly low energy today is because I had a bunch of dental work last week, and I'm not recovered yet. So, but I did want to address this with the City Council. Y'all bear with me for just a moment. I'm sort of, let's see, here we go. Okay, I have lived at my apartment for ten years, ten and a half years this month, and I'm coming to you to complain about a serious safety issue regarding at least one apartment complex here in Nag. I have not checked out any of the other apartment complexes. I'm not mentioning my apartment's name because my goal is not to embarrass them, but to get them to listen to our feedback and pay attention to our needs. Also, I'm hoping that y'all will acknowledge my concerns and address this matter in the very near future. This is a serious matter. For some background, all apartments there are supplied with a high-quality fire extinguisher. I'd used one about seven or eight years ago. Immediately asked for and received a fresh one. Some months ago, I used my air conditioner, but at my replacement request, I was told, no more individual extinguishers. You can't have extinguishers in your apartments. There's a unit outside on the brickware, the bricks. When I asked what the notice of this matter entailed, the secretary didn't know. She said, well, we don't, we didn't send out any announcements. And I said, well, how are the runners supposed to know the item that keeps them alive has been moved? Anyway, I spoke with the fire chief, Mr. Jody, I believe the last name is Cantrell, who explained that this action was in line with city code despite the contrary viewpoint of the newspaper where the young eighteen-year-old woman was seriously burned, and there were two recommendations in that article for apartment dwellers. I'd like to introduce my friends and neighbors that are gonna have to rely on this, what I consider a terrible decision. Mrs. G is eighty-five. When she stands up, she looks like the alphabet letter C. She's that osteoporosis, and she moves real slow. She moves about as slow as I do. I'd like to know how Mrs. G is supposed to get from her kitchen fire to the exterior of her apartment, read the directions on the fire extinguisher, break the glass, run back inside with the fire extinguisher, put the fire out. And then there's her daughter, Ms. S, who lives across the street from her, but I don't think my girlfriend would be able to get there in time to save any belongings or her mother. And then there's Mr. J and his wife, Mrs. P, who are both confined to wheelchairs.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
I'm not trying to cut you off, but we have a time limit of three minutes.
I know, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
No, that's fine.
We got your point.
I meant to bring you that time around.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Mr. Ronald Rogers.
I'm Ronald Rogers. I proceed at three ten Brewer Street in Nacogdoches, and I've worked the federal prize for eighteen years, and I later retired. And they got a red light down there that it don't have no turn signal. So there've been plenty wrecks there for the last fifteen to twenty years, you know. So I would come to present it to, if you would, look into it, that we may get turn arrows for the top and bottom, right, for University Drive and, you know, Waterloo King. All right, thank you.
That concludes the open forum. Items to be removed from the consent agenda, if any?
I'd like to remove B and F.
Mr. Mall, reduce B and F.
I'll make a motion that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mall, you've got the floor on B, and then we'll do it.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there not any Texas firms that could do this exhibit for us?
There are Texas firms. So since this exhibit had such a high price, we did send out a request for qualifications, do all the normal bid posting. Out of the six recipients, or out of the six responses, there was one Texas-based firm, which was MMD Services from Dallas, Texas. They were the only respondents that are Texas-based. There are Texas companies. They're usually not very big. Usually in the museum world, a lot of our Texas-based companies are exhibit writers or designers, but not full-fledged companies that do the design, writing, fabrication, and installation, which is what we are wanting for this project.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
I was wondering how, how we set our priorities for both the hot tax money, but also for general, you know, parks and rec funding, because people have asked me several times, how do we prioritize? How, who sets these priorities? Can you answer that in general?
Yes, I can. So for the hotel occupancy tax funds, it's set up in a way that a certain amount goes to the CVB, a certain amount goes to the County Expo Center. Todd may have to say yes to that one. Twenty-five thousand dollars goes to our Historic Restoration Grant Fund every year. And then the amount that is left over each year, as of right now, is used for either our museum maintenance, or if there's a project identified like these Zion Hill exhibits, we tend to roll over the money for several years until we get a dollar amount that is usable for that project. So that is what has been done in the past. These Zion Hill exhibits, I believe first showed up on our CIP. We put them in there around the time we were starting to finish up the Zion Hill Church Restoration Project. So it should have been in your CIP for roughly the last three to four years. It's kind of like the final piece. For several years, all of the leftover funds were rolled over for roughly ten years in order to get enough money to fully restore the Zion Hill Church. So that is how those hot funds are used. Of course, if there is extra beyond that, that would be up to the council to use. For hot funds, and Todd may have to correct me on some of this, hot funds can only be used for certain things, for tourism, which is why we use it for our city museums, so for tourism-based services. So it would have to be somewhere in that realm, but that could be up to council as far as, you know, if this is a priority, if there's something else like sports tourism, more money into Historic Restoration Grants, that would be set by council, as long as it falls within the correct parameters.
I think it would really be worthwhile, worth our time, to have a larger discussion, obviously not here and not on this particular item, because we get a lot of feedback. Why do we have, you know, exhibits that are just standing still? Why aren't we putting our money into a movie? Why aren't we? So all of these things, I think, would be very helpful to discuss and, you know, possibly a workshop, you know, about how to prioritize, particularly bring more people in. I've had several people ask me just this last weekend, you know, why are we doing this rather than this? And some of it could be funded out of hot tax, others could be funded, you know, just in what we do in parks. So I am recommending we have some kind of workshop that, about thinking through all that.
I have a question about Article Five, because it says, upon request, the consultant shall meet with the city staff and/or city council to make a presentation of its preliminary design of the project. Could we just have that and say, and the city council gets a look at it also, so we know what we're getting for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Absolutely.
It would just involve taking the "or" out of that, if possible?
And that, I believe, I'm not sure if any of our council members were on council our last few exhibits. That is our similar process to where the city says, here's kind of some topics, here's what our space looks like. In their qualification statement, they showed some examples from other museums. We tend to look at it and say, I really, I like this, I think this would be great. And they tend to take a first stab at it, where they're like, here's a few ideas. They bring it to staff, which we then bring to council in whatever format council would...
So this has already come to council before?
No, I mean for our past exhibits, like at our Durs Taylor Museum and Railroad Depot, we follow a similar process to make sure everyone's informed along the way, and we don't get down to the very end of fabrication, and all of a sudden, everybody hates it. So we do want to keep council informed in whatever way you would like to be informed, whether it's a open workshop, a report, progress reports, we're happy to do whatever is needed.
That would help a lot, you know. The other thing I wanted to know, and this is, I guess, a legal thing on, on both of these items, which it says when the, this is nine point zero-two, it says, when the original contract amount plus all change orders is less than fifty thousand, the city manager or his delegate may approve the written change order, provided the change orders are not blah blah blah. But anyway, the point of it is, is that you could spend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then you could spend forty-nine thousand more on work change orders without council approval? Is that just normal standard business here on contracts?
That's our, that's our procurement policy. So that language that's in those two provisions are directly from our procurement policy.
Okay. But, but the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand budget for this really doesn't stand. I mean, you can't change it every time you go lower than that for a change, work order?
But change orders do happen, any kind of construction or thing.
I know, thousands, yeah.
And that's, that's all those provisions are there to address, and, you know, again, mirroring our procurement policy. So, yeah, it's possible that it would go over that amount due to the change of order.
But I will say for this project, the budget is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. It all has been allocated for this. And today, working with exhibit concepts, they have never gone over budget, and we have not had a single change order with them.
Well, I appreciate you taking that one more out and let us see it. That would help a lot.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And the F thing, I'm just curious, it was budgeted at ninety thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And the tree service came in at twenty-three-five?
Yes, sir.
How did that happen? How did we get so lucky?
Can I interrupt here?
Yeah.
Council, we need a vote on the other item since it was removed.
So I'll make a motion that we take the "or" out of Article Five, "O-R."
And approve the rest of the item?
And approve the rest of the item, said Chad.
Second. Legally, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five B is approved.
Now the tree.
Now the other tree. So our original estimate was from a totally different company that lined out three different stages for the Pine Grove Expansion Project. This is just Phase One, because to do a new section of a cemetery, we have to remove the trees, all the root balls. Next budget year, we'll be doing dirt work, and then after that, we'll be landscaping, and then mapping and opening the new section. So the original company, who funny enough, did not actually bid on the project, estimated at ninety thousand dollars for this phase, eighty-five for the next one, and I believe sixteen for the final phase. And then when we did our request for bids, they did not bid. Our bids did kind of run the gamut. This is a local company that came in at twenty-three-five. We did have another estimate for two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. So I'm not sure what they were looking at exactly. But also with Kent Tree Service, we did put a caveat in the bid project that they could either bid to take all the trees, cut them down, pull the root balls, and then dispose of all of that at our city dump, or they could burn on site with permission from the fire marshal. Kent Tree Service did choose that option to burn on site. It'll be properly supervised, but also makes it much, much cheaper. So it'll be more bang for our buck, allows us to stretch that budget and hopefully come in under budget for the project as a whole.
Okay. Well, I just was curious. I love it that we're using a local contractor, and obviously that we're getting such a wonderful deal on it.
And I believe just that original estimate probably had multiple loads, or at least estimated multiple loads of hauling to the dump, gas included, things like that, which will not be in this project now, since they will be burning the trees on site.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you tell us how much more room it will give the cemetery?
It will create a new section. I don't, it's about a quarter of an acre. I don't know the exact number of spaces at this point. We will have to map it out, and we do have to make allowances for a road and several walkways and mowing areas, but it is a quarter of an acre on the backside of the Pine Grove Cemetery.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve item five F.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Item five F passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes the consent agenda. We'll go to the regular agenda now. First item, item A, received presentation from Mark Schuster with Mid-America League Baseball concerning the summer baseball team located in Nacogdoches beginning in the two-thousand twenty-six season.
Mayor, Council, Jessica Sal, Community Services Director, I wanted to introduce Mark Schuster to you. As a reminder, council did approve our lease agreement with Mid-America to use the SFA baseball field out at our baseball complex. Of course, that was a lease agreement, not a lot of fun to read through, no offense, Jerry. So we have that lease agreement, but Mr. Schuster's gonna tell you more about the program, our next steps, and what's upcoming.
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. My name is Mark Schuster. I am the founder of the Mid-America League. My company is Ventura Sports Group. I've been doing minor league baseball for forty years, and so I'm really excited to be here to talk about our version of minor league baseball and bringing it to your city. Your staff has been great to work with. We can't be more excited at the opportunity. Our league itself is currently six cities, expanding four more next year, including this city. We're currently in Abilene, Texas, four teams in Texas, Abilene, Sherman, Texarkana, and Piney Woods, which is outside of Longview, and then we're in Arkansas, in Fort Smith, and Joplin in Missouri. We are expanding to Fort Scott, Kansas, Beaumont, Texas, Bryan College Station, and obviously here in Nacogdoches, and we're very excited about that. So what can you expect at J.C.'s Field? The league itself is a hybrid league. It's made up of the best college players in the country playing alongside guys who played professionally before, so you'll see some former pro players playing in this league. We play sixty-four games, thirty, thirty-two at home, thirty-two on the road. We cannot guarantee you that this team's gonna be a winner, but we can guarantee you that you're gonna have fun at the ballpark. We like to say that if you leave the ballpark not knowing the score, then we've done our job entertaining you. So this is more than just baseball. So as part of this process, what is the name of this team going to be? So a few weeks back, several weeks back, we started a name-to-team contest, and I will tell you, that response has been amazing. We've had over nine hundred submissions for the name-to-team contest, which is a lot when you hold a contest like this. Some very creative people that live in this market, for sure, some very creative names. I'm not gonna lie to you. Some incredible, some not. But early next week, we're gonna release the six or seven finalists for the name, and folks will be able to go back to the website and vote again. And within a month or so, we'll actually come back to council and to the mayor here and present the name in front of y'all. So as part of that, we'd like to present the mayor a gift here for being a new admitted to the Mid-America League, and this is not to be used at tonight's council meeting.
Thank you. I've got a lot of history at that baseball. I promise you. We'll talk about that later. Thank you so much, and we are glad you're here.
Great, thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you so much, guys.
Oh, he should not have that. Who wants to talk tonight?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move item G to, right now, because they have to travel back home, and this will be considered approval of an ordinance after any discussion of the General Obligation Bonds Series two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor and council, while they're handing that out, Todd Semino, interim Director of Finance. As you know, we issued our first tranche of funds for these bonds about fifteen months ago, and we're ready to issue the second tranche of funds. As you mentioned, our financial advisors for this transaction are here, they're from Hilltop Securities, and it looks like Michael Martin's gonna be leading the presentation.
Yes, sir. So I'm happy to report that we had a successful bond sale today for the city of Nacogdoches. I'm just gonna go over, so this booklet that was just handed to you has a very in-depth, you guys have probably seen it before, it's got a lot of details, pretty much anything you need to know about those deals in there. So I'm just gonna go over the highlights, not gonna go over the, the whole thing. So this is the members of the financial team. You have myself and John Martin, who's the main financial advisor for the city. Bond counsel is Bob Dransfield and Christian Savant from Norton Rose Fulbright in Dallas. And we sold these bonds on a competitive basis, and the purchaser, the winning bid, ended up being Robert W. Baird and Company. They're a fairly large investment firm. They, they purchase a lot of these competitive bids, they're, they're always number one. And so throughout the process of selling these bonds, we had to go to talk to the rating agencies, and we're happy to report that the double-A minus rating has been affirmed. And there's just some highlights up there. Stable economic base anchored by and benefiting from a stabilizing institution. Although many of the economic indicators are weak, including median household, median household effective buying income, gross county product per capita, and per capita personal income. Historically positive operational performance, with the city posting several years of surplus operations, although fiscal twenty-four resulted in a slight deficit due to budgeted one-time capital expenses. And Nacogdoches is expected to, is expecting a larger surplus in two thousand twenty-five due to the one-time revenues, including sale of assets and grants. And then finally, one of the highlights is moderate debt burden with rising costs we expect will continue to increase in the near term, based on debt needs in both the general and enterprise funds. In addition, the debt summary includes a manageable pension and post-employment benefits profile. So basically, they're saying that you guys are doing everything that the right way and what you can control, you're doing a really good job at it. There's certain economic things that you just can't control that go into the rating. And so here are the bid results from the bond sale. So they came in this morning at ten o'clock, and you have Baird being the winner there, at a four-point-five-five percent. It's a solid rate right now in this, this environment. We've seen a lot of volatility recently, so we're, we're happy with that rate. Moving on, this is what we call the sources and uses of funds. You can see at the top, it's the, under the sources, it has the par amount of the bonds and the premium on the bonds. And so these bonds are sold on a tax-exempt basis, meaning that the premium there, that is what the investor is willing to pay for that tax-exempt bond. And then moving down to the uses of funds, we have the various props that were voted on a few years ago that the city successfully passed. The airport, fire, drainage, parks, streets, I believe the total is about a little more than fifteen million dollars. And so those, that's the money that will be deposited into the city's accounts when we get to closing. And then you have the cost of insurance, bond insurance, and underwriter's discount. And so bond insurance, that is something that the underwriter or the purchaser can decide they wanna use or not. They're the ones that pay for it, and the city does not pay for it. And basically, what it does is it increases their rating from a double-A minus to a double-A. Oh, boy. Can't really see that from here. That's all right. So I'm just gonna look in the book real quick here. Okay, so, starting on the left-hand side, column one, that's existing AV tax payments. So that's the debt that the city has outstanding that is solely supported from ad valorem taxes, property taxes. Column two, you can see, that's the principal amount for each year. Three and four is the interest rate and yield. And then moving further to, I think that's five there, that's gonna be the interest cost per year, and then the total, which is principal plus interest. And then column seven is the new AV tax payments, the aggregate payments. And then eight, nine, and ten, that is your net taxable value and the growth rate assumptions. And we're projecting that this will have an INS rate of point zero-nine-eight-three. So just a slight increase there.
So what does it say? The bonds will be paid off, the case will still be working.
I guess, yeah. Sorry, Case. And so once we resize these bonds to make the payments level for the first twenty years, and then you have an extra five years there at the end, you can see from two thousand forty-six to two thousand fifty, it drops off, and that's basically because we had some of these bonds go for twenty years, and some of these bonds go for twenty-five years, based on the, the useful life of these projects. And then after we put in all of the costs and resized it, we came out to a true interest cost of four-point-five-four-seven-three-eight, seven-five-eight. So moving on, this is what we call the bond production report, and so you can see that that's, this is how the premium is calculated on the far right, production column. The best way that I describe this is that the interest rate is what the city pays, what the issuer pays, and then on the yield, that is basically what the investor is earning. So in two thousand twenty-six, the city will pay five percent, and then whoever owns those bonds, they're gonna pay a little extra to get that tax-exempt yield for a two-point-five percent tax-exempt yield. And then we have a call date of September thir, September first of two thousand thirty-four, ten-year call, so that first callable payment is five hundred and forty thousand in two thousand thirty-five. And then finally, this is the cost of budget, cost of issuance budget, excuse me. You have the financial advisors, that's me and John at Hilltop Securities. Bond counsel fee is Norton Rose Fulbright. Attorney General fee, for every public bond sale in Texas, it has to go through the Attorney General, and they collect a fee there. Fifteen-C two-dash-twelve fee, that is a regulatory lookback that we do in-house for each bond issue to make sure that you're in compliance with all the previous undertakings, which you were, which you were indeed. And then S and P rating fee, that's what I was mentioning earlier in the rating report, that's how much you have to pay for that report. Paying agent fee, and then POS posting fee, and then we always have some, a little extra contingency, just in case we mess up. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Nacogdoches General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series two thousand twenty-five and approve all matters incident thereto.
Second.
Have motion...
Have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item, item 6B. Consider the following appointments for the city boards and commissions, convention and visitors bureau, historic landmark prevention, preservation committee, housing authority board, mayor's committee for people with disabilities, and planning and zoning, and zoning board of adjustments. Let's see, last month, at the end of the month, I think it was, the council met for two days interviewing roughly over 40 applicants for each one of these committees. And we came to a consensus that on the convention and visitors bureau, new members will be Joanna Temple, JD Salas, David Warner, and Alisa Ficus. Okay. I'm sorry if I butchered that, but historic landmark preservation committee, new members John Wigle and Carrie Mitchell. Housing authority board, new members Lakendra Henderson and John Quinn. Reappointed Nicole Upshaw and Patricia Crane. Mayor's committee on people with disabilities, new members Anna K. Johnson, Rebecca Beauregard, Lindsay Keenan, Nancy Niehaus, Brent McLemore. Reappointed Christina Ward and Todd Peterschagen. Parks and Recreation Board, new members White Henderson, Shawmaneek Ross, and Tony Roddy. Planning and zoning, new member Bridgette Arant. Reappointed Shannon Conklin and Lily Foo. And last is the zoning board of adjustments, new members John Sloan, John Watt, alternates Jack York and Barbara Gandy. Do we need a motion on that? Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the appointments as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Consider the approval of resolution authorizing and approving the certificate of formation and bylaws for the type B economic development corporation and granting further authorization to file the certificate of formation with the Texas Secretary of State.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jerry Baker, city attorney. What you have here is a proposed resolution related to the formation of a type B economic development corporation, which the council approved going forward in resolution number I put this chart here that Larissa had initially presented to the council when she made her initial presentation on the discussion of the type B. And just to remind the council where we are in the process, so we're still on the left-hand side, and if you approve this, the resolution, which includes the certificate of formation and the bylaws, one aspect of that will be approved, the initial board of directors. Okay? Upon approval of the resolution, the certificate of formation will be filed with the Secretary of State, as we'll discuss in a minute, and we'll go into that next part of incorporation. Okay? So what you have, as I mentioned before you, is the resolution that approves first attached as Exhibit A to the resolution is the certificate of formation. This is the first step in incorporating a type B corporation, or any type of corporation or entity in the state of Texas. Under the Texas Local Government Code 501051, it is required to be approved by the city council. And that's what we're doing here this evening. Okay. Another requirement under chapter 505 is that the certificate of formation must indicate that the corporation is governed by chapter 505, type B of the Texas Local Government Code, and you'll find that in article four of the certificate of formation. Two important things, if you recall in our discussion at our special meeting that we met last week, one is the name of the corporation. It's important. As we discussed, that name cannot be the same or similar to an existing corporation in the state of Texas. And so, for example, we couldn't call it Nedco because that name is already taken. So the name that was discussed at the meeting was the City of Nacogdoches Development Corporation, and you'll find that in article one of the certificate of formation. Also, as we discussed at the special meeting, was the appointment of your initial board of directors, which are set forth in article eight of the certificate of formation. And you can see there that the list that was discussed and is included in the, in Exhibit A in front of you, Randy Johnson, mayor, Chad Huckabee, mayor pro temp, Richard B. Beverland III, city manager, Scott Boyer, Nedco chairman, Robert Flores, William Gandy, and Garland DeMarcus Simmons. So as I mentioned earlier, upon council approval, the certificate of formation will be filed with the Secretary of State. It includes a small filing fee for any kind of nonprofit, that's the fee that the state charges. If the Secretary of State approves the certificate of formation, they would issue a certificate of filing, and that makes, that's kind of your birth certificate for the organization. Also included in the resolution and attached as Exhibit B is the proposed bylaws for the corporation. The bylaws are what set forth the rules and regulations of the corporation, and they include the powers of the officers that are appointed. So as I mentioned, in the certificate of formation, we have the list of the board of directors. At the organizational meeting, the directors will meet, approve the bylaws, and also appoint officers. That's the two requirements that are set forth in chapter 505. So as you can see there in that bullet point, that last bullet point, the chapter 501 requires the bylaws to also be approved by the city council. And in fact, that's the first step. Before the board of directors can vote to approve the bylaws, the city council has to approve it. Any questions about anything I've covered or anything we've discussed so far about the type B corporation?
Do you want a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing and approving the certificate of formation and bylaws of the type B economic development corporation and granting further authorization to file the certificate of formation with the Texas Secretary of State.
I'll second.
Have motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. It's a big deal for this city. Okay, next item is the public hearing. Discuss and consider action regarding the use of a portion of recreation area located at 600 East Piller Street in Nacogdoches, Texas for the proposals of locating a new municipal fire station.
Our chief Brown, please.
Thanks, sir. I pulled a Scott Williams there. Mayor and council, thank you for being here tonight. Mike Brown, your fire chief. So as indicated, we're here tonight to hold a public hearing about possibly using a portion of the Clint Dempsey soccer complex for the purposes of constructing a new fire station. As you may recall, we have struggled to find a piece of property that is suitable for this location. We need approximately three acres of land to properly site this station, and we have been unable to locate such a parcel that meets the requirements of ISO, real-life response times, travel distance, mileage, et cetera. Or if we did find a property that was suitable, the price was extremely prohibitive. So we backed up, circled our wagons and started thinking, and that brought us to this location here at the Clint Dempsey soccer field. As we walk through this, we'll talk about some state law requirements. When a city is seeking to change a designated park or recreation area to another use, there has to be a public meeting to be held. That's why we're here tonight. We have to demonstrate that no reasonable or prudent alternative exists, and that reasonable planning to minimize harm to the recreation area is taken into account, and that we publicly published three consecutive notices of this hearing. That was done on August 3rd, August 10th, and August 17th, respectively. So a little bit of background for us. Again, city staff and our real estate broker have been unable to find sites that meet that location criteria and are not cost prohibitive. So that forced us to back up and punt a bit. We started spitballing ideas and realized, obviously, that the city owns a large chunk of land there at the soccer complex. With hat in hand, I approached Jessica Sal to float this idea past her, and she didn't immediately throw things at me, for which I was thankful. We ended up talking through it realistically, and staff agreed that the change was feasible. Further meetings were held with city staff, Jessica Sal, Carly Allen, and representatives of the Nacogdoches Youth Soccer Association. As obvious, they are the primary users of that park, that facility. They've spent a tremendous amount of money, time, effort over the years developing that in conjunction with the city. They agreed that this was something that could be feasible. Continuing in that vein, I met with the soccer association board and discussed through it. It was determined that the central fire station location there is not detrimental to their operations. And in fact, as the conversation evolved, it was determined that we could actually have a synergistic effect on the facility there. For example, some of the changes that would be required to the driveways and entrances that are required of the fire station were in the planning stages for the youth soccer association or for the city to perform. Basically, by requirement of the fire station, some of those costs would be absorbed by our facility, thus saving those funds that had already been budgeted by other entities. So from a fire station standpoint itself, this is a relatively ideal location for emergency response. This meets all of the ISO and real-world requirements, the drive time, the distance that I referred to earlier. Again, this is a multi-company station, so we'll be having two manned apparatus there. The station would house our aerial ladder truck. That's an ideal location for that. It's right located downtown. It allows us fast access north on university to the, north on university to the university, where our higher-rise facilities are located in town. And then additionally, it keeps us close to the southern industrial properties where we're most likely to utilize that apparatus, and forgive me, I've been under the weather a little bit. Some benefits of this, continuing, this is a city-owned property, so from the auspices of wisely spending bond funds, there would be no acquisition cost for obtaining this land. It's already city property. Part of the discussions that we've had is the fire station site would include public parking that's available for use. Weekends, when we're not filling up the parking lots with our big red trucks, the public would have access to those. Again, that builds that synergism with the ongoing use of the park. Some ideas we had also is that this helps curb vagrancy, theft, and vandalism. We'd have a 24/7 presence there. Unfortunately, as we know, our parks do suffer from some of those issues. The thoughts are that us coming and going all hours of the day and night would have a curbing effect on that. Excuse me. Additionally, for the patrons that are there, the children that are there playing constantly, you're going to have E&amp;Ts and paramedics there, paramedics there basically 24/7. Obviously, for both apparatus or calls, might not be there all the time, but for the most part, you're going to have that medical response immediately there. And again, just generally, this helps fuel the growth of the Parks and Rec program and the Nacogdoches Youth Soccer Association. And I'm going to get a little help from a friend here. Jessica Sal is going to be kind enough to speak a little bit more in-depth on the community services side so that I don't butcher it.
Mayor, council, Jessica Sal, community services director. Like Chief Brown said, this actually will be a big boost for the Clint Dempsey soccer complex. The soccer complex is well-loved, very used, but has been added to over the years kind of wherever we had land. If we had extra land that was semi-flat, it became a field. If there was land that was not flat, it was a terrible parking lot. So we're very excited about this because this will actually, having a fire station located up front will allow us to make some much-needed changes in really more of kind of a master plan way. This essentially, if approved, the new fire station would take over the location of our current U6 fields, which are our baby fields. Right now, if any of y'all have had kids in that U6 program, you park on one side, you run your children across the busiest road in that complex to the smaller fields, which is not safe, not ideal. So with the fire station there, it would allow us to move the U6 fields over to a less busy part of the complex, be closer to a parking lot for the parents that come with the kiddos. Usually, if you're coming with a smaller child, it's parents, grandparents, strollers, all sorts of things. So it allows them to be located closer to a parking lot and gets the youngest children away from the road because sometimes they do break free of parents, and we don't want any accidents over there. It also allows us, with this type of investment in the complex, to then use some of those dollars as a match for our Texas Parks and Wildlife grant. Carly Allen, my assistant director, worked very hard to submit this application. We did submit it on August 1st to TPWD. We should hear in January of '26 if we receive the grant or not. Even if not, the city and our capital improvement plan right now does have some money. Nacogdoches Youth Soccer Association has also saved some money. So even if we do not get this grant, we can still do major changes and improvements to this complex. If TPWD does give us grants, we can do even more. We are hoping with this grant, we can improve some drainage, some parking, add some additional roads, because right now there is one way in and one way out. We'd like to do a very big U drive-through to make it a little bit easier to egress and ingress out of that property. Also, this really sets up long-term growth. NYSA has been involved with the Clint Dempsey soccer complex for at least 30 years, and so this will allow them to use their money well, use our money well, and really kind of master plan this complex. NYSA is fully supportive of this plan, and of course, staff is as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that front.
So again, just for general awareness, this is a very rough estimation of the proposed site. Again, it's approximately three acres, and this is a draft, not a final version at all, but giving you a general idea of the concept that we're looking at for the fire station and the parking that would be there. That concludes my presentation, so at this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has anything to say?
I'm just curious if you guys have discussed about this being in the floodplain, because I think it's in the floodplain. So I was just curious, I had a couple people ask about that, and so I wanted to get that on record.
Yep.
I may get you, but I think I could, I think I'm good for now. You are absolutely correct. The majority of that site is in the floodplain. Again, city ordinance prohibits construction in the floodway. Construction is allowed in the floodplain as long as construction is at least one foot above base level elevation. I'm getting the nod from the engineer, so that's a good thing. Again, our thought, final design has, you know, has not remotely been done on this, but this would be tucked up somewhat near Stern Hoya. And if you think about how much higher Stern Hoya is, the entire facility would be somewhat
I was going to say, having been in a couple places where everything is in the floodplain, yes, there are ways to build around and mitigate that. And as we're looking at other projects all along the creek and in the vicinity of downtown, we may actually also look at other ways we can mitigate some of that, even just sheet flow as we move forward with different projects. So that is kind of a global thing we're trying to do as we look at these, a variety of future improvements.
Any other questions in the audience? Good evening, George Ellis. What's the access to Main Street here?
That's an excellent question. Did not include this slide, but as many of you are aware, TechStop is going to be redesigning the bridge and the approach there at East Main. This actually functions extraordinarily well for us in the long term. The drive that you see extending north will effectively hit New Rolfs when Rolfs is relocated to the west by TechStop. That will go immediately to East That will go immediately to East Main Street, allowing us to go east or west. So we'll be able to punch across Pillar, right to Main, and then go east or west.
Thank you.
Any other questions in the audience?
There being none, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Any questions?
I got a couple. Where does the saved money for the acquisition, what what happens to it?
Realistically speaking, I expect that
No, fantastically.
I expect to use it most likely for the next land acquisition. As we talked about before, our budget was tight, especially in the land acquisition piece. And so our hopes is that we are current, I hate to even say this out loud, we're currently under budget as we have progressed so far. I hope to remain that way. We will stay under budget one way or the other, but this is, gives us a little bit more breathing room as we seek to obtain that final piece of property to build a third station.
Does it affect the bond? The bond money was for that acquisition, I assume, so does it affect
It's you're talking about total costs. So I know our bond folks are gone right now, but as long as we stay in for the total, we're good. That's they're they're not gonna, they don't nitpick our itemization. And then, of course, if we needed to, let's just say theoretically, I've seen scenarios that, yes, sometimes bond projects and or you hit a a patch of inflation, you saw some of the CPI years during COVID, you might have to add to it. But as as Mike has said, our goal is to make do all three stations within the approved bond budget.
This was, this was a good thing, that that we had, we owned the property, and the soccer association was gracious enough to work with us on this, and where it benefits both of us.
Absolutely. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor, but again, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to both Parks and Recreation and to the Soccer Association, yeah, Soccer Association for entertaining the idea. I truly expected to have things thrown at me, and they were eventually quite receptive.
When you get all those buildings moved off of East Main that they've already bought the right-of-way, that that station will literally front East Main, so you'll be able to see it.
And and also keep in mind, with that right-of-way acquisition, and they're gonna, TechStop will be constructing a new pathway underneath the reconstructed bridge, the parking for what is currently Liberty Hall will be on this on this side of fires, the new fire station side of of the the bridge as well. Because that right-of-way taking, so in the end, it'll all have a new look with a lot of, much more amenitized, and also not have the kiddie fields basically at the entrance with parents and kids crisscrossing the street.
Well, I think it's great. I I really appreciate the creative thinking that went into it and the collaboration, you know, within within the city government. And I think it's wonderful not to take another property off the tax rolls also, particularly downtown property. And I just, and I, it's definitely a win-win for the soccer association, for the little kids. I mean, they'll just love being, you know, having the fire station there. I think it'll be just a great thing.
Absolutely.
And I do think you'll have your access out to Main Street. You know, we could see that clearly on one of the other slides earlier. I'm sorry.
Chief, I just, I know you, you mentioned this in response to to Brandy's question. I just want to make sure to emphasize how much time and effort that you and engineering staff have discussed dealing with floodplain issues and where water is going to go. We're not minimizing that risk at all. We're not putting anyone at danger in this process, and that's one of the assurances that I know that staff has discussed, knowing that there's going to be more impervious cover that's there, and how are we gonna deal with that water? So just thank, thank you for that, and if you want to say anything else regarding that.
I think I'll stop there.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes. Chief, being an old fireman from 1979.
Yes, sir.
I am excited to see it coming. Because it's it's long overdue. You guys have made the best with what you've had, and I'd like to see you improve even more. Also, it will put a curb appeal to East Main and to University as well. We'll be looking at a lot of growth and new firefighters, and I know the firemen all that are all here are excited as well.
Absolutely.
So we'd just like to thank everybody that's involved, that we're involved, the work you put in, the thoughts, and the prayers that have gone forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, do you need a motion on this? Okay. No further questions, we'll need a motion, please.
All right, I'll move that we approve the use of the portion of the recreation area located at 600 East Pillar Street, Nacogdoches, Texas, for the purposes of locating a new municipal fire station.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor?
Amen.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
With amens. Next item, 6E, public hearing, discuss and consider action on planned development case PD 2025-01 regarding zone change from agricultural to planned development district on one parcel of land approximately nine point five acres plus or minus in size, more particularly described by Nacogdoches Central appraisal district parcel 203177, and generally located south of West Austin Street, approximately 250 feet west of the intersection of West Austin Street and Opel Street, Nacogdoches, Texas. Mr. City Manager, Juan Paul.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Planner, I'm sorry.
I'll take that. I'm good.
He said he didn't want.
Juan Paul, that's city planner. So this site is nine and a half acres. This site is nine and a half acres and located on the south side of West Austin Street between Old Tyler Road and Pearl Street. The property is surrounded by a large undeveloped parcels, except for an adjacent senior center and an age-restricted subdivision to the east. Approval of the PD would allow a skilled nursing care and rehabilitative center to be built adjacent to that neighborhood. The PD request includes both concept and development plan as allowed under section 118-392 of the zoning ordinance. If approved, the plan will control the land use and site layout of this project. The subject property is currently zoned agricultural and is surrounded mostly by agricultural zoning with a PD zoning district immediately to the east. That adjacent PD was previously approved for senior housing and included a proposed assisted living and nursing home facility, which was never built. This proposal helps fulfill that original intent by introducing a similar senior care use in close proximity. The comprehensive plan designates this area a single-family residential. While care facilities like this are not typically included in that designation, the proposed use complements nearby senior-oriented housing and services. The planned development process allows us to apply site-specific standards to ensure compatibility. In this case, the PD will be limited to a single land use, a nursing care and rehabilitative facility with the site plan shown here. The proposed facility will be a single-story building with 110 beds. It will be set back roughly 400 feet from West Austin Street, preserving the existing tree line and detention pond. A secure courtyard and multiple outdoor areas are included for for the residents, and approximately 80 parking spaces are planned well above the minimum standard. The developer is proposing to install a 15-foot landscape buffer and preserve existing trees along all property lines in place of a privacy fence. Staff finds this approach appropriate for the setting and potentially more effective as long as the tree line is preserved and enhanced with additional plantings where This design is of this facility is single-story residential in character and intended to fit in with a neighboring senior community. And this is a picture of the subject property from West Main Street. And this is the adjacent senior center that shares a PD zoning district with a residential subdivision. And this is the tree line in between the planned development and the senior center, and the applicant is proposing to retain the existing trees. This slide shows the land uses within the 200-foot notification area. Staff sent out four notices to property owners within 200 feet and 23 notice postcards to those within 200 and 500 feet. No written responses have been received. A neighborhood meeting was held at the recreation center, and one nearby resident attended the meeting out of curiosity and expressed no opposition to the request. Staff did receive a phone call from a neighboring resident with concerns of increased traffic. Staff believes the development plan is consistent with the ordinance, provides appropriate land use compatibility, and meets the conditions for approval. The PNZ Commission voted unanimously on August 11th to approve the request of PD, and city city council approval tonight would establish the new planned development zoning district and the development plans for the PD. The last step in the process is site plan approval, which would be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the audience? There being none, I'll close the public hearing and move to council discussion, if any.
I have a question. First one. City Manager, could you come up here, please? Back on the earlier slide, there's some dotted, there's a dotted square rectangle in there. I was just wondering.
That that one?
Yeah, what is that?
The dotted where?
The left. Up left.
Retention.
The detention pond.
Yes, it's a shared detention pond between this site and the adjacent site to the west.
Okay. And I know there were questions at Planning and Zoning about the sewer line. Where's the sewer line gonna go from?
Right now, they're proposing two different locations, possible locations. One would be to the east where the Austin Hill subdivision is, coming off one of those sewer lines using a, a, they're using the, not a, so they'll either be coming off East Austin from the Austin Hill subdivision or along the right-of-way of West Austin.
Mike's coming to help.
Help, and Mike.
Mayor, Council, Michael Boyaney with 215 Consulting, where the civil engineer for the project, working with this. So we got a couple of options we're evaluating for the sanitary sewer. One would be going east, direct, just due east to the, near
Macklemore Drive.
Macklemore Drive. Part of this facility, though, because of the type of sanitary sewer waste that we'll have, we have grinder mechanisms for that and pump stations. And so what that means is we're gonna control the flow of discharge from that facility.
So would that be in the facility?
Right, on their property, yeah. It'd be their own facility, but that's something that we do for those types, just because of the waste stream that we're dealing with.
Are you gonna have to enlarge, larger pipes?
So, no, actually, what what we can do is throttle how much can come from that facility by what size pump stations and what size tanks we have on site. And so, because we have to grind up anything that goes down that waste stream. So nursing care facilities, prisons, things of that nature, we get all sorts of things down the, down the waste line, so.
Any other questions? You shouldn't eat that Reese's Pieces.
It's not me. It's a contact thing over the bling here.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion, Mr. Giggles.
I don't know if you can.
Go ahead, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the planned development case, PD 2025-01, for a zone change from agriculture to PD planned development district on one parcel of land approximately nine point five acres plus in size, more particularly described by Nacogdoches Central appraisal district parcel 203177.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item, item 6F, consider approval of the ordinance of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas, amending Chapter 6, Animals, Article 5, Dangerous Dogs, Article 6, Animal Facilities, Breeders, Kennels, Pet Shops of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas, providing a severability clause, providing a continuation clause, providing a repeal clause, and providing an effective date. Mr. Baker.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Jerry Baker, City Attorney. What you have before you is proposed amendment to Chapter 6 of our ordinance related to animals, specifically to Article 5 concerning dangerous dog designations. And I just want to give you a little background on why this amendment is coming before you tonight. So a couple weeks back, I and the municipal judge, Judge Watts, as well as several members of the animal control, met to go over the procedures for the dangerous dog designations and any appeals of that designation such. We spent about an hour or so going through the regulations that are set forth in the Texas Health and Safety Code, and that's in Chapter 822, and just kind of outlining, outlining the processes by which animal control is to go through the the dangerous dog designation. As we went through those requirements set forth in the Health and Safety Code, it came up during our discussions that certain parts of our code, which we are allowed to add to the requirements imposed by the Health and Safety Code, certain part of the requirements that we had set forth and specifically in Section 6-66, kind of interfered with what the state indicated as far as specifically when it comes to appeal of the designation. So how the process works is that an animal control officer can designate based on their investigation that a dog is a dangerous dog as defined under the Health and Safety Code. They, the owner of that animal can then appeal that designation. Unfortunately, the way our ordinances are currently written, it didn't allow for the number of days by which to to do that appeal before certain requirements had to be met, including having the animal altered and have the animal tattooed or ear tipped. And so because there was a 10-day requirement to have the animal altered and an immediate requirement to have the animal tattooed or ear tipped, it clearly interfered with the permission as allowed under the code for the owner to appeal the decision that the dog was dangerous in the first place. And so we needed to address that with an appeal, an amendment to our ordinance. In addition to that, we wanted to make clear in our ordinance that two, two of the additional requirements that we have there, attendance to a responsible pet ownership class and the payment or the obtaining of a license, the payment of a fee for dangerous dog designation are mandatory and not permissible, as they are, they say may instead of shall right now. And so we wanted to change that language to make that mandatory. And also to clarify the process for if a a dog is designated as a dangerous dog outside of our our city, but is then subsequently brought into the city, what is the process there? And so that clarification is set forth in subsection 9 of the the new amended section. And finally, it would allow for the surrender of the animal in lieu of meeting those additional requirements, which is allowed under the Texas Health and Safety Code. We just wanted to specify that 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 requirement was, could be, they could meet those requirements by just surrendering the animal. There was also an additional amendment. Well, before I go to this next one, let me ask, is there any questions regarding the amendments? amendments to specifically six dash six six? Okay, there being none, I'll go to the next part of the amended ordinance. So in discussions with Jessica, we wanted to have the option to, because right now there's a requirement that any kind of adoption from a city-sponsored, you know, a city-owned facility, adoption of an animal, they're required to pay an adoption fee. So we wanted to have an option to allow for an, some type of city-sponsored adoption event that would be at the discretion of the city manager or is designated, to waive that, that mandatory fee requirement to potentially help, you know, incentivize people to come out and adopt animals. And so because that was not, it was silent in our ordinance, we just wanted to add that additional option there. So as you can see, that's the, an addition to section six dash seventy-five of the code of ordinances. Any questions?
Any discussion? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the ordinance changes outlined in item six F.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, receive the proposed 2025 and 2026 budget. We've already beat this horse to death during the, during the workshop, but you want to say a few things, Todd?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Todd Semino, interim finance director, just a little background. State law requires that the city file a proposed budget with the city clerk 15 days prior to a budget hearing and 30 days prior to the adoption of the tax rate. We met that state law requirement by filing the proposed budget with the city clerk last week, so it's available for inspection. All we're asking for you, from you tonight, is to entertain a motion to accept a budget and to set that public hearing for the budget, and we're recommending the public hearing be held on September 2nd, 2025, at a regular city council meeting at City Hall.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll venture into this, especially since he has a baseball bat. I move that we approve, no, accept...
You're just, you're just, yeah, you're not approving the budget tonight, you're just accepting it.
We accept the budget and we set the meeting for the budget hearing for September 2nd, 2025.
Correct.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six I, take a record vote on a proposed tax rate, and this is a proposed tax rate for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. And a record vote means that you will vote individually on record?
Right. Mayor and council, just for the public, whenever a proposed rate is above the no-new revenue rate, it requires a record vote of the council with a 60% approval rate, being five of y'all, that's a simple majority anyway. And then we got to file the notice of that rate in the paper, which we'll do, and then we'll set a public hearing. So this motion is to ask you, council, to basically take that record vote and then set a public hearing for the tax rate. We're proposing September 16th, 2025, at a normal council meeting at City Hall.
Do we have the proposed rate? Fifty-seven something?
Yes. Now later, when you adopt the rate, you're going to have to adopt it in separate parts, but right now, the proposed overall tax rate is 0.57596. So 57 cents, 57.596 cents per hundred dollars valuation.
Do you need a motion on this, or do we just take the vote?
Right.
Both?
Motion second.
Okay.
I make a motion that we set our approved, propose, our proposed tax rate for the 25, 26 fiscal year at 57,596.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Sir, you got to take a...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Record vote.
Okay, I'll go first. Yes.
Chad Huckabee, yes.
Blaine Williams, yes.
Brad Muller, yes.
Kathleen Bellinger, yes.
Okay.
And then the public hearing.
Oh, and that we set the public hearing for September 16th, 2025. Do you need a separate motion for that, or just amend the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I make the motion that we set the public hearing for the proposed, for the tax rate, to adopt the tax rate for September 16th, 2025.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That concludes our regular meeting. We will adjourn into executive session pursuant to government code 551.074 and 551.072, and be back shortly. Thank you very much. At 7:08, pursuant to, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.074 and 551.072, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept Karen as our new executive.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That concludes our board meeting tonight at 7:09. God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.